The show is hereby declared in order. And accordance with our usual practice in such occasions, turn our attentions to Alex, who's going to lead us down the garden path.
Thank you, Eric. So, the purpose of the work session is to kind of pick up and a couple of items where we left off from last month's work session. Also, during that work session, there was some discussed verbiage to work on, on staff's end, based on the feedback and discussion we all had there. So, the document that has been provided to you guys does reflect either both, the updated language that I tried to capture based on our conversation, some of which we were able to kind of nash through within the meeting. And then there are a couple of topics that rightfully so, the commission decided to hold until the next meeting. And I'll be able to, we can skim through this and then get to the points where we need to discuss. Obviously, we're missing a couple of folks today. David had reached out to both Eric and I and given us a little bit of feedback on the document that was forwarded to you guys, so we appreciate that. Nothing really substantial on his end, other than which you may remember the conversation last month, that David's kind of taken responsibility of, or the task, if you will, to look at some of the standards with his background, and now that we know we've got them for another two years. Thank you to council for letting us have them for a little bit more, so we can lean on his experience some. So, he's working a little bit with Eric. I've seen some of the draft language, but that wasn't under this initial charge that we set out on, so we can check one box, get a small victory hopefully before we move on to tackling something larger. But that really related to roofs, and that is where David has done the early work, I guess, on his side. So, that's a topic for another time. Under the minor work there, we agreed after discussing a little bit about new exterior materials, allowing for the option for changing of said materials to be an administrative level approval. We settled on the fact that if it were a non-prohibited, obviously, the standards does have a list of prohibited materials, but not quote-unquote "an approved" list. And again, that came about conversation, I believe Mr. Taylor was the one who helped wordsmith that one. Also, the replacement of roofing material, we talked probably extensively about that topic last month. So, now revised language under minor work would read replacement of said material, same style, size, and color, or an approved color. Next, replacement of doors and windows that are the same style, material, size, and color as the existing, or an allowed substitute material. We talked a good measure about that topic as well. We just wanted to make sure that we did not put something in there that would allow for a material that is basically prohibited. So, under windows and doors, we're pretty well covered as far as those standards and for residential alterations to existing residences. Installation of accessory structures in buildings that are the same style, materials, and colors of the principal building or structure, and also must be located in the rear yard, is now the language for, under the minor work approvals. We struck the no dimension greater than 12. I know at least one commission member asked a little bit about that, but it is, again, I'll bring it up, that we do have the governor and the PDO that limits the cumulative total of all accessory buildings to 30% of the floor area of the principal building. So, there is a scale governor built in the PDO that is, of course, outside of the purview of the commission. And with that information, I believe everyone was on board with allowing for that. Also, you know, it might sometimes get lost that any projects that would be classified as minor work, even though it would be listed in one of these bullets, would also have to meet every single applicable standard. There would be, you know, the roof pitch, the not taller conspicuous location, which could be subjective, but by adding in the bullet here, that it's got to be in the rear yard. If you want something in the side yard, obviously, it may not be inconspicuous, so that would then have to rise to a level of major work, or if it were taller than the principal building.
Alex, let me just ask you to stop there. Kara, your first day with us, and you obviously weren't here when we had the discussions that Alex is summarizing. Have you had a chance to look at these materials?
Yes, well, I think, yeah.
If, as we go through these things, something occurs to you that you'd like to question or even disagree with, you have every right to do so, okay?
And it's worth noting, too, obviously Kara and I were able to spend a good deal of time together doing the onboarding, and I'm sure she's read all the material that was passed along to her, and seen all the modules from the School of Government, and she's already an expert. But I did give a brief description on kind of where we were in this process, but it is important to note that no official vote on any of these proposed revisions has been made by this commission, and one would have to be done by this group, or a majority thereof, in order to forward it for council's consideration, who has the authority to adopt these standards and put them in place. But this is sort of, I would say, the last leg of this charge. And it's been well communicated that council would like, especially previous council, as we went through this process, for a period of over two years at one point, to, if you see something, you know, it's in our core values, if something needs to be fixed, or if we can improve it, let's do it. And rightfully so, we should probably be doing this once a year at a minimum.
A minimum.
Yeah, just reviewing it, yes.
And I think it's important to remember that what we're trying to do is not so much make changes in substance of the regulations that we enforce, but to improve and clarify them for the benefit not only of ourselves, but also of the public that we serve and the staff that, in the first instance, has to apply and advise with respect to these standards. So, we hope that, and I think what we've done so far achieves this, we are clarifying for everybody's benefit rather than making material changes.
I agree. This project, that's what we're trying to do, is clarify, but we also have the right to change the substantive part if we feel that that needs to be corrected or changed because of new materials, or it just would be a better way of doing business. So, we're not limited to just declarative information. We can make any recommendation if we think purple's a good color and we want to include it in the color palette and...
Right. And as...
But the council has to approve everything we get done before it ever goes through, so they get the last vote.
And as Alex says, there's another chapter that's...
Yeah, substantive.
Alex and David and I have been rowing... We haven't rowed the boat because it hasn't left the dock yet. We've been looking at the boat for the last couple of months, and we're going to have something for you all to look at, hopefully, the next time we have a work session.
Okay.
And I think it would be helpful.
Trust me, the last time we went, they rebuilt this thing. They rebuilt it from the ground up, and I would never, ever recommend that you do that again. That was a nightmare, took two years to do, and I'm not sure it was done well at that point, so be very careful of that. If you can keep it fixed as you go along, it's a much better process. And that whole committee that did that update come to that conclusion, that wasn't mine separate to theirs. They were, many of them had come and gone and didn't get to finish the project. We're back to this, though, because I do have a question about this one.
Okay.
It says, please leave this in.
Prefer.
Or prefer to leave this in.
And that is under that next-to-last bullet about the accessory structures?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I, you're talking about this is David's comments, right?
I just...
Okay, so those must be the ones with, those are David's comments that you guys have?
Okay.
So, the white background rectangle with the arrow pointing, any of those that you see on there, those are David's comments.
Got it.
Mine have the, my initials there. In the right margin.
So, you're, is the one we're going by, and you still have that deleted, that last statement?
Correct. And after reminding David of the 30% cap, he was comfortable.
Okay.
Eric can attest, so...
Okay, I take your word for it. I'm just trying to, because mine's got this little thing that says prefer to leave this in, and that wasn't up there, and that's why I was questioned.
But those are David's edits.
Okay, I understand.
I think the plan is that at our next work session, hopefully, all of this stuff is going to come back to us for a final vote. Hopefully, David will be present, and hopefully by then, he will be satisfied with whatever it is that we come up with, and if not, or if anybody is unhappy with it, that will be time to make the final cut.
Once it's voted on, it's voted on, it goes to the council. Up until that point, anybody can make any recommendations or change, we can, as a group, make changes as we need to, so, as it is with any motion.
It should be noted, too, that even, you know, with Ann being an outgoing member, I did, and I'll be glad to reach out to her, I did look into some of the signage categories and cross-reference with our PDO. Our, I still feel that our sign regulations are, our PDO sign regulations are far and again stronger than anything. We don't need to go much more above if anything.
Let's focus on this, though, instead of jumping, please, would be my request.
So, I don't know that we need to really talk too much about the last bullet. We talked a little bit about statutory requirements and case law for demolition of buildings, and when and if, what comes first, what rights the commission has. And as be noted for demolition, of course, all the powers preservation commissions have are to delay.
The 165 days, I think, is the words.
So, the major work bullet here, we just scratched out the existing language and would be replaced in order to be codified with a minor work item, that replacement of a different roofing material or style. So, if you're completely changing your roofing material, it's still going to be major work, and that seemed to be the wish of the consensus, at least of the group that we had present with that meeting.
Oh, I get, just an administrative issue with this. It says that the code officer must provide certified in writing to an official, and so they're going to certify that in writing to your records?
Correct.
And that would meet what this is saying?
And that would be, yes, and then we would, of course, forward that to the commission in the monthly report.
Right, okay, thanks. I have just clarified that.
Yeah, we have to have that in writing.
He has to provide it to at least you, and now he has to, we also have to see it, I guess.
You will get it, so you'll have that notification, to your point, yeah. So, you don't think that something came down without, you know, knowing what your guys' powers are? All right, I've kind of come down here to the changes to roofs. The topic of metal roofs for existing residences, basically. Folks who are doing alterations or doing additions, this isn't new construction, this is under changes to existing residences. I'm trying to think of the genesis of why we selected, or why the group, the committee, came with the selection of the colors there. We talked about another case last month, the 125 Kelly, for example, where black metal roofing is being used, whether it be for accents or the total roofing material. Is that a color we want to consider? One thing that I threw in there last minute is we do have the, I think it's the standard under, is it architectural metals about that they can't involve a glossy finish or something like that? Do we want to be that prescriptive, maybe here in this section? And also, as far as item six, and I don't know that thickness is an issue, a gauge, should we consider a minimum? Should we consider a maximum for residential construction, so it doesn't look too commercial? That's the intent for item number six with the, with the standing seams related to the spacing and the height of the ribs.
That was discussed when they put that in there, back at that first, that last big update we had, and I asked that very same question, why quarter inch? I mean, I'm not sure the rationale for it, and I never did get an answer that was clear to me why that was there. Nobody, they just said, well, that's the way we've always done it.
From my recollection and sitting with the, that original, it was supposed to be quote-unquote "update" committee that turned into the revision committee, I believe, is we did have the pleasure of an architect on that way-too-large committee when we first sat on, who eventually became an HPC member, and we got to enjoy their experience, expertise as well. But it was that some, my recollection is, there's, that's an industry standard. When you get that large or above that size, that is typically commercial grade and not proper for a residential structure.
Okay, and I understand that, and that's kind of the answer I got, but the point is, is that we're extremely eclectic around here. If we've got some that's that way already, then maybe that is historic, maybe commercial grade, because back when they build a lot of these buildings, commercial grade is not the same thing it is now. You know what I'm saying? Commercial grading changes over time, just like every, all the other stuff does, so it may be appropriate to put one with a half-inch seam on it, because that's what came off of it historically. I mean, which allows us, I guess, to override it.
Yeah, not with...
If you can provide proof that it was an inch and a half when it was built...
A, if we determine that it's congruous with historic district, then that will allow an exception to these standards. And secondly, I think your point is that if, that we generally agree to like-to-like changes, so if somebody says, that's what was on this house when it was built, and I want to keep it that way, we would, I think, in our discretion, normally agree to that.
Yes, I agree, and that's the whole reason we're a quasi-judicial board, is that we get to do those things, unlike other boards.
So, we need a leash on this. There's got to be a mechanism that's the threshold. Your question is, is a quarter inch the right threshold?
Right.
And we don't know, but until, we don't have an alternative threshold, no sense in changing it, and we can handle it through congruency.
Yeah, I agree. After I asked the question, you guys answered it, thank you.
On this, Alex, just, there's one strike here. So, the last time on number five, I know we were deleting, deleting words to kind of make it simpler, so like, instead of adding colors, we would actually remove and just say compatible with the structure, almost less is more mentality. So, that reads metal roofs are allowed, but the material must be compatible with the architecture of the existing structure. Do we even need to say with the architecture? And we just say instead, be compatible with the existing structure? Because we use words architecture, we use style, but that's just adding another layer in reference there in architecture, when I don't think we need to. We could just say, is it compatible with the structure? It gives us more purview to make a, to make it a decision.
I agree with that. Just strike archi-stick.
That's a good, I think that's a good point.
I also have a comment in that relative to the colors. Is copper really the preferred color? That's what this says. Why do we give it preference?
I think it should be stated, must be copper, weathered copper, dark brown, dark brown.
I think that's accomplishing the same thing.
Or one of the following colors.
Yep, it's along the same lines, clean it up.
You don't need that.
You could almost strike the copper, because if you put copper up, it's going to be weathered anyway, within a very short time.
The way it's written, it says, we are recommending copper. That's the way it's written. I don't think we are.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, so we got to change that sentence.
Now, everyone, keep in mind the format you've been given, this is what we've been living with for three years, so there's, no one's proposing that language, that language is adopted.
This is language change, that's all.
I understand, just make, no one's...
We understand what we're saying here. The material must be copper, right? Not talking about color in that part of the sentence. And then we go on to say, or, one of the following colors, which seems to imply that if it's not copper, it'll be one of these other colors. If it's copper, it'll be copper color.
As we're saying, materials must be copper. Well, we aren't really limiting people to copper materials, are we?
That's why the "or" is very important there.
Okay.
Good, but it's or one of the following colors. So, we aren't calling the first copper, we're calling the first word copper as a material. It must be copper, irrespective of the color it is. It must be copper material, or...
Ever opposed to the other...
Or, one of the following colors. Well, I would still have to be copper, but I could make it look like copper, or the copper would have to be...
Must be copper or, so it can be something...
Yeah, but the materials must be copper.
Unfinished, natural. If you got a...
Yeah, but I just...
You can be that safeguard there.
I agree with Terry, and I think we're saying two different things. The first part of that sentence, before the "or," talks about the material, and we're limiting it to copper only. Is that what we intend on doing? Then, then you go on and call the copper, so metal roofs must be made of coppers, what that sentence says.
Add the "or."
Yes, it does.
Can you say, can you say...
Because you changed the other part of it to color.
Can you say copper or a non-copper material in one of the following colors?
That's a good way.
Yeah. It could be a steel roof that's dark green, but that would not meet the must sign up here.
The material must be copper, or...
The material must be copper.
Or...
Or the colors.
We haven't said that.
Yes, you did, or one of the following colors.
Or Kara had it right, or a non-copper material in one of the following colors.
I mean, I think that's what we mean, but I think, I think Tom has put his finger on it.
Clarify.
That it's not as clear as perhaps someone has thought it was.
As he'd like it to be, yeah.
Because right now, I would read that it must be copper, and then, which would assume copper color, or it could be something else, as long as it's dark green.
We agree. Kara, I hope you're not another attorney. Were you, are you an attorney by trade?
No, linguist.
Good, thank you. Better, better.
Sorry for you to be with us.
No, that's a good thing, we need somebody like that, thank you.
You won us over, Tom, we got you. That was, and Kara had a good...
Let's see if we have a consensus here. Do we agree that we don't want to require that the roof must be copper and cannot be any other material, leaving color entirely aside?
Agree.
All right, so then we need to edit this to accomplish that. So, it must be copper, or...
Non-copper, a non-copper material in one of the following colors.
Permitted material within one of the following colors.
That's good, yep.
It is, it does read metal, the first, the first word in that item number is metal, so...
Actually, you're right.
Look at that.
So, if we're going to change it that way, why are we saying it must be copper at all? Why aren't we just talking about...
Metal, it must be metal.
If it is a metal roof, it must be one of the following colors.
Copper is a type of metal, right? So, that's what, is that where, that's where Alex is going? I see you just nodding your head.
So, we could say compatible with the architecture of the existing structure, and must be one of the following colors.
If it's metal.
Must be, must be metal.
The first word is metal roofs are allowed, but the material must be compatible with the existing structure.
And the metal must be one of the following colors. Isn't that what we, isn't that what we, what we mean?
But copper is also a color besides a metal.
And we've said it as a color as well. Need weathered copper.
Well, it would go on as shiny copper originally, and very certainly thereafter, copper usually, unless it's finished with a material.
I think we partly want to include copper as a color. Copper, weathered copper, dark brown, dark bronze, dark gray, dark green, or dark silver.
Black.
I've got, I've got, I've got no objection to black. The difference between a dark gray and a black is about that much.
Notice my dark hair?
Yeah.
Almost as much dark hair as Pat has.
Is there a difference between copper and weathered copper?
Yeah, one's a color and one is a material.
But I mean, like, is there a copper color and a weathered copper color?
Like a patina?
I think there are.
Yeah, copper is a very bright shiny stuff. Weathered copper is a dull, sometimes greenish color.
Do we need to say that, or will all copper end up being weathered at some point?
Yeah, but it's when you put it on there, then, you get into that argument. So, if you call copper a color, then just put it in copper, weathered copper, they could, because some of it comes pre-weathered.
I think what we're trying to get away from is failing to draw a distinction between the material that is on the roof and the color of the material. And we inadvertently caused a confusion there, which I think now we understand that what we want to say is, it's a metal roof, and we...
One of the following colors.
Now, talk about what colors the metal roof can be.
Right.
We don't really care if it's titanium, so long as it's one of these colors.
Somebody wants to buy the titanium to put on a roof, God bless them.
I see.
It'll probably last a long time, but I wouldn't, I didn't write the check for it.
Alex, are you...
The material must be one of the following colors.
Yeah.
Copper, weathered copper, dark brown, dark bronze, dark gray, dark green.
Black.
That's what this is saying. I hadn't thought of it, but I think, I don't know that there's a difference, but I think black should be permitted.
I would have no argument against black.
There's now at least one house.
I like her black top, it works good.
Came before us last time.
Terry's got black in his shirt, too.
The school being black was a flat-out lie. It's not, it's gray. I drove home that night to confirm that route. No, it's a gray roof.
This was before sunset.
Yes, I think you were right behind me in the car. I didn't know if you were coming to check it out.
Okay.
So, add block, move copper down to a color, and go for it. Got it, good. Do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem, I mean, I think, I think we're accomplishing the same thing, just a little bit clearer, yeah.
Good.
I mean, I think that's how this commission and how the staff has been interpreting it, but if it's clear, it's clear.
And you raised the query, whether we ought to specify glossy or matte, and it seems to me, again, that's something that we can make a judgment on, but I don't think we need to make one in advance.
I think that's something we can tackle when later on.
Some of the difference between some of these glossies and some of these mattes, again, about that much.
Yeah.
I think we can, we can punt that and the gauge, as well as the rib height, for more discussion another time.
So, you're going to make that change, though?
Yeah.
Okay, I believe, did you say yes?
I think I've got, I think I've got it, but I think we'll all remember that when we get it back.
That's fine. You got it, that's all I asked, yes or no?
Down to exterior walls and trims. Again, this was to kind of allow for alternate or substitute material, just, again, the word non-prohibited.
It's a must in kind, or you can change it to non-prohibited.
For it to be able to obviously meet the standard.
Right.
I believe that took us to the end.
Fifty-five minutes, and David's not here.
Well, there is this amendment table... there is this amendment table that would obviously be revised. Tom had a good idea a year ago?
Yeah.
Or more, I don't know. That maybe the inclusion of, of a table to track amendments to this document, so you'll be able to see what was, the last change was. It, it could, it could have as much information or as little information that just lets you know that this section was amended on this date.
I think my primary concern was that when you went and look at it, if you don't have an amendment date on it, you go to look at it, and you don't know whether you've got your version as the current version or not, unless you put something like this in here. But you can add as much as you want to that. That was my point. I want to be able to look and say, I know the last amendment was A, and I've got the original. Or it's Z, and I got the original, or A, you know, or something, so you can easily decipher if the material you're looking at is the correct revision.
In, in various kinds of, of legal documents, that's the thing that, that is most helpful is to, has to have two things. Each page that is changed has a date on it, the bottom usually that says, current as of whatever the date of the last revision is.
Of that page.
Have a table that says, that gives you a list of all the changes since the original one, so you can look and see that the page that you've got is the most recent.
And the major reason for doing that is then you can make changes without having to reprint the whole standard again.
Reprint the page.
So you could say, and you send out a change deal, and you can only give me the pages that change. Change A1 with A1 and Z2 to Z2 or page 5 with 5A or however you want to do it dated such and such. So it just allows, if you go beyond that. But all I originally was asking for, Eric's idea is great, but all I was originally asking for was the date for which it was changed.
So when we complete this process and when the, when as an if the council approves our recommendations, that will result in a significant number of relatively small, but we think important enough, changes so that anybody using the document needs to be alerted to the fact that it's a possibility of change. So if I've got one that says it's adopted September 28, 2021, and nothing after that, I want to know, because somebody ought to tell me that I've got an out of date book.
And, and it could be as simple as this. Original, originally adopted May 19, 2019. Go back, look it up, that was accurate. Advised or amended January of 2020. That happened too. And then this version amended September 28, 2021. We could just do that, we could do that at the, right there at the bottom of the, the cover page or right at the top of the second page too. It'd be that simple. And each one would be like adopted and then amended and then struck, and then.
Anyway, it's just the, I'm looking for the, the document I should be using. That's my concern. I don't care if it's, you know, we recommend it on a certain date is, is kind of an irrelevant story. That's the council, that the only date that really needs to be there is the date the council enacted to the change, so that I know on that date it changed.
Presumably.
Because they, we may send this up, and they may go, nah, I don't like it. Go, go, go turn it around again, and irrelevant to the, to that table.
But in, in any event, when someone comes into Alex's office and says, I'm planning to renovate my house, or I'm planning to build a new development on Saville Row, or whatever, one of the things Alex needs to be in a position to do is to say, have you got the most recent version of our standards? Because if you don't, here it is, and this is what the commission is going to use to decide whether or not to approve your project.
And you can find it on the website. Because we've verified the one that's on the website is the most current version. Which you do, but, but you could put that version number right in there so people could see it on the website as well.
Once these minor things are finalized, when does this go up to council?
After we vote on it?
We need, I, I think the way we've been talking about, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, is that after today, Alex will go back, make whatever tweaks seem to be appropriate based on our discussion and based on his looking and seeing if we blew something, we got a knot and we should have had a should. And then we're going to come back for what I hope will be a pro forma approval. However, we did tell David, because he was unable to be here today, that he would have a shot, which.
Make it a very, you shouldn't have more than one or two comments, and we can solve the one or two and vote for it.
And because he's an architect and we respect his judgment, we would listen to him. And if, if he were here today, that's what we'd be doing. Since he can't be here today, he's going to have one more shot at it.
And if it's complicated, we'll adjourn it again. If it's not, we'll vote on it.
That's right. So that's, but hopefully substantively, we're essentially done with this project subject to that.
The reason I asked is that still, we're not going to touch this for a couple of months once this is finalized. And I, I really would like to add something in there about playhouses, swing sets. And I, I try to take a stab at this and look, and I've looked Kerry and Apex in some of these cities. A lot of them don't have ordinances. It's addressed through an HOA. So the way they handle it is through the actual community or the housing. If it's, you know, something you buy from Walmart, no one cares. But, and, and this is not dogging on some of our neighbors, but I'd encourage you to drive down Woods Road, and there is something rather large being built. And, you know, I, that person has every right to do that. There is nothing prohibiting that person from doing that right now. So let them build it. But in the future, with the kids and all the, I live on the, that side of the district. I've built something large in my backyard. But again, it's, there's nothing saying you can't do it, right? But I, I do think we're going to see more of that, and that's going to encourage MOP to build 20 by 20-foot platforms in a setback right on the edge of the property. We don't deal with setbacks, but it would be helpful for them to have guidelines in which they could operate. And I don't know if I want to wait another year until we touch this again and get these substantive changes in.
I, I, I don't know as we're going to wait another year. I think we need to keep these meetings going on because you, you guys are working on this whole next collection of stuff that we want to do. And you can include it with that, or it'll be included along the way.
Well, let's, let's.
If we touch on six months, then we have one or two revisions. Then it goes, we vote on it at the following meeting. Then it goes to council, and so that whole process is a year realistically. I mean, it's.
Shouldn't be. Once you get it up and running, I mean, there may be only one, one sentence change that goes through. It doesn't have to be collective to the story. We tried to do it just because for efficiency, I think.
I, I got a suggestion. I mean, we've got time before this next. I mean, what I have to do now is wrangle together everything and put it in a comprehensive document. That, that, that's what I've got in front of me. All right, it wouldn't hurt for another sentence to be, began to be, to be drafted. I'll work with you in the meantime, Richard.
I wasn't volunteering, I was kind of just.
No, 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 you, you've, you've been.
Delegation.
Delegation.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to lean on your experience and expertise now with this.
Child.
I think it could be something as simple under the section for additions, accessory buildings, et cetera, yada, yada, something that substantially size playhouses. Let's make sure we got some sort of ready-made definition, playground equipment or something. We might have to make sure the glossary is up to date. You can put a dimensional cap on it, height, length, width, material, color. And if it doesn't meet that standard, then it's going to have to be elevated as a major work item. If we need to do something else with the, the minor work, major work, then we can. I mean, if someone's putting in a, you know, the. Yeah, or, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, from the, the size of this building, for example, you know, I.
Most lots, most residential lots are not the same. The size of this would be bigger than a house.
But, you know, right now it's handled through the UDO. And they, I think it's playground equipment, maybe recreation or swing sets. It's not, you know, play, residential playhouse.
Yep, there's, there's a location requirement. There is a statement that says you, you, you don't have to get a permit, period. The caveat is if it is triggered to, to meet the North Carolina Building Code, then it's treated as a, a regular accessory building. So i- if it hits that criteria or that threshold, meaning the building code official has got to go out and take a look at it, it's, it's this large. Before the latest updated codes, that dimensional criteria had been 12 feet. That still is the case. However, there are exceptions now that are included in the building code, the current building code that were not in previous codes, which is what the PDO has in place now. So we had that fallback. We had that sort of 12-foot cap before. Now playground or equipment or playhouses are listed as an exception in, in the North Carolina State Building Code. But we can, with this document, put a dimensional threshold on it.
Oh, and, and would we also then be judging the design of the playhouse as to whether or not it's congruous with the special character of the Pioneer's Historic District? I assume we must, because that's our, that's our charter.
The, the one I've encouraged you to look at is about a year and a half ago, what's the, what is the road that goes by the back of the Carolina off, off Highway 5? And then it, it comes into the village.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of the street, but I know which one you mean.
Is it Shaw that goes around?
Yeah, I don't think so. By the spa, and then you go to, past the wine shop, and then drum and calls on your right.
Yeah, yeah.
Ritter.
Yeah, that's Ritter.
It was the lady who put the in-ground pool in. And we said we all going to be envious of pool parties and. They have a playhouse in the front right corner of the yard. It's wrapped in cedar shake.
Yeah.
Cedar shake roof is, it looks like a little mini model of that. Add something to the house as opposed to, you know, we're not, you know, small ones yet, but something that looked more like an exterior crossfit workout with monkey bars and big things and platforms. And the neighbor has to look. The adjacent neighbor has to look at that. There's really nothing they can do about it. Because right now, you know, if they came to Alex to complain, that is not prohibited, so.
Yeah, and I think, to your point, it has to be congruous with the thing, with the thing. Even if it looks nice, if it's not congruous, then we got a decision to make. It could be, it could be, look like the Taj Mahal, but if it's not, we don't have a Taj Mahal in the side, in the.
It might have to have a copper roof.
It may have to have a copper roof, yeah, or something else, so. It has to be congruous because our prime standard, if you will, is it ha, it must be congruous with the historic district.
And indeed.
Not that it's going to be pretty or looks nice. That's kind of nice to have too, but it's not. If it's not congruous, it's not congruous, I'm sorry.
Statutory standard, it's not even ours.
Yeah, you're right, it's, you're right.
So you and David work on that together?
You and David?
Oh, there's a playhouse. Congruous or not congruous, I don't know.
Well, so if somebody builds a playhouse now, and we don't have any standards.
Nothing in our standards, in these standards.
So they get grandfathered in, then they can just keep it?
They could be 22, be long, and six foot wide.
Okay.
Have a roof section, a platform, it can have tents, it can have cargo nets hanging, green slide, purple slide.
You can't make them take it down afterwards.
Well, they might under the PDO, I don't know.
It's not retroactive.
But we can't take it into consideration as being congruous or not.
They don't even come to us.
We don't deal with complaints.
Because they won't, yeah, we would never see it.
We're not informed.
Right, and we, we'd never see it because it's not in our standards. Historic district or not.
But if it, if it exceeds those dimensional limits, then we would see it. But we don't really have any standards other than sort of the, the global one, that is it congruous with the special character of the historic district. And, you know, since it, it looks like.
Historically, I've not seen anything that looks like that in this village. Brand new, high style.
My, my ancestors settled Andover, Massachusetts, and they built blockhouses to protect them against the Indians.
Right.
Now, if I wanted to build a blockhouse in the back of my yard in excess of 12 by 12 feet, I'd have to, well, I'm not in the historic district, but if I were, I'd have to get HPC approval. And.
If that's what the.
No standards for deciding that.
But would never come to us.
All right.
All right, so we're going to, who, I, I'm confused now on one final point. Who's going to work on this playhouse thing? And, and. Richard keeps pointing to, to Alex, and Alex keeps saying somebody else, so I'm not sure who's got, who's got the lead.
I'm going to, I'll email Alex some thoughts.
Thank you.
You know, in the document, sometimes when they reference pictures of a house, I think that's useful. You know, in the guidelines. And it may be.
We could find one that's done right.
Yeah, maybe that lady is willing to have, let us take a photo and put that in the guidelines and say, here's an example of what is, you know.
So I, I just did a quick look. The glossary already includes, it's lumped into accessory structure, so we can, all we got to do is expand and be a little bit clearer to clarify some gray area that we have, and.
It's not a huge issue, it's just we need to address.
Give me some thoughts that you have, and I'll work with our staff, and we'll try to put something together.
The other thing that I would recommend is when you go through this for the final time, keep in mind the glossary. There, we may have inadvertently tweaked some glossary terms in here.
And, and that was the whole reason why I wanted to take off, take, take the smaller bites as, as we've gone through to, because that gives me an opportunity to make sure we didn't have inadvertent consequence somewhere else. But we did make some changes a little bit, you may remember, I think, last fall, to the glossary. But I have all that material. But we'll take a look, make sure we didn't create an issue.
Inadvertently changed the definition of something along the way. Another thing, to help with that, Alex, and this is just totally how the staff wants to do it, I'm not, but when you do changes to these things, it's sometimes better to do what we called redlining in, as you similarly have done here, but to leave everything that was redlined in the document that you finally reviewed. In other words, reval, I think redlined some stuff that you just took out and is no longer there, have you, or not?